I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And before I forget, I wanted to remind the public in general that the town caucus is on March 27th at 7 o'clock here in Town Hall. The caucus is for the purposes of nominating persons for elected office. So if you wish to run for an office, you should attend or plan to attend the caucus and get yourself nominated. The election is May 5th. And the last day of post for a town election is April 25th. And the next annual town meeting is scheduled for May 20th. So just a reminder that if you have interest in running for office, the caucus is the 27th at 7 o'clock here in Town Hall. Our first appointment is at 6:40, so if you'd like, we could do... Warrants. I have a... Is it a Treasury warrant?
The warrant.
The warrant? Treasury warrant. I have the bill of warrant for W-14-32 in the amount of $1,434,386.35.
Can I look at it?
You certainly may.
Sorry.
I don't think I've ever spent a million dollars in my life.
Notice missing the dollar.
Oh, this is just the school bills to back up the warrant.
Yeah.
Oh, this is part of the reason.
Yeah, probably.
Here's part of the reason, it's just school bills are on there.
There we go.
There's $247,000.
Of school bills? I'd like to see what we spend on school.
And for the record, the Verizon and the fire alarm invoices are in that warrant.
They are.
That were submitted, yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to see the power.
While you guys look at that, I'm just gonna make a couple of more or less public announcements that the 8 o'clock executive session for litigation is off tonight. Settlement negotiations broke down, and there is going to be no settlements. The trial is scheduled in May... not February, it's November. I think it's February 11th in Westfield. And the building inspector and Ed are going to be there. No other signatures, no... It's a really light agenda, huh?
Hmm.
Take time for the public. Limited public that we have.
Should be a lot of workers here.
It should be.
It's a shame.
You're gonna win the attendance award, George, for showing up wrong.
Man, they're a better tracker than most of the...
You have a better tracker than all town residents. We're gonna start having to check with you when things happen.
Hey, you learn a lot.
And a reminder that next week we have a meeting. Next week, as opposed to this week with a small calendar, it looks like it's gonna be a busy week. So... We have the Angel Monument has been established, installed across where we need to have a dedication at some point in time.
In the spring.
I would guess. Sometime warmer.
We need to put a press release out, too, that the monument is there.
That, and I met with a printing salesperson, who we were brainstorming together to figure out how we can make postcards. I know you went with another company, and I'd like to talk with you afterwards and run some things by you.
All right, great.
And we can mix, put all these projects together and send them out to everybody in Southampton.
Good, thank you.
Oh, I did put on next week's agenda, what's the title, Emergency Management Director? Ed was the Emergency Management Director, but now that he's retired, we have to place that somewhere. So we should have a discussion, that's been on the agenda for next week, to discuss where, who, what, where, to make our Ed Emergency Management Director.
Should we ask one of the two weeks?
Well, I think Ed may have some ideas, certainly as a visiting one, because it's available. But it should be, we should resolve it. Right now, I assume, we don't have an Emergency Management Director, because he may still be functioning in that capacity, because it's separate from the highway. But whether his intention is to continue functioning in that capacity or not, and find that he's not going to, what are we gonna do with it?
Well, we should put it out there that we're looking for a new replacement.
Well, again, you know, right now, it's a separate position, so...
Right.
As far as I know, he did retire from that position, but I don't know whether that was his intention or not. So we're looking to that.
Sorry.
No.
Consideration for next special town meeting?
What do we, yeah, we can talk about that. What do we need a town meeting for?
Virginia has a couple articles, one or two articles, I don't remember. I have the folder in the office. And you have the public safety with the meaning of the titles.
Yeah.
And I didn't send anything out, because I didn't know what the board's pleasure was.
Well, because I talked, there was an email from Katie, and I may have spoke, I've spoken to them so much this week, there may have been, I may have spoken to her, too, that they still haven't finished that.
Oh, okay.
At least that was the gist of the email I saw.
Well, they might take some, too, though.
She wrote back that she did compliment the...
No, but from other towns.
Exactly, it's unorganized, but I don't think she's finished the review of the titles. Does Virginia's things need immediate action, or can they wait for the annual?
I think they need, I'll have to go back and look.
We should look at that. There is a cost to running a special town meeting, so if we can avoid it, I would try to. Just per two articles, and maybe something for public safety. But I don't know whether they're ready to go forward with that or not. That's the decision made.
Well, I was just looking at the gas, electric, and energy bills that are really crazy right now.
I make a motion to sign the warrant 14-32 in the amount of $1,434,386.35.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, there.
Right.
It's kinda static, I think that's one twelfth of the whole town budget right there.
Yeah.
We're supposed to have parks at 6:40.
They're meeting in the break room, right now.
Oh, they're meeting, oh.
What am I supposed to report about?
I'm sorry?
What am I supposed to report about? I'm supposed to report findings with meeting departments in Town Hall.
That's when you're meeting with the employees in the town. You had discussed this with the board, you were asked, how about every Tuesdays at 2 o'clock, you were gonna come into the Town Hall?
Oh, I talked about having office hours.
Yeah.
I don't have any findings at the moment.
Oh, and just, I'm keeping it as...
Oh, okay. I thought I was supposed to have findings, but I'm not sure what I was supposed to found by now, but...
Report back, communicate back to the select board.
Got it, thanks.
Coffee bar? No, this is at home burning. Put my hand on the oven.
Do you have alum?
I don't know.
No one-day permits, no PCFs, no PRs, one warrant that we signed. Can we take care of Randall's conflict of interest?
Yeah, I thought we did.
Oh, no, they sent this down around for everybody to review. That's right. You got an email with it attached?
Right, I saw it, yeah.
Do you have Randall's conflicts of interest? We gotta do something about that.
Randall's missing?
Yeah, they already sent it around.
Oh, no, that was his wife.
I don't have my computer.
Oh.
Sorry, Mike.
Sorry, mine, me, I thought I was so smart, letting you in to turn it over.
Here, I'll just give you this. You have the agenda ready.
Yeah. Can you get us to do something, can you?
Yes.
But did we make him a special town employee last time?
No, just Amanda.
That's what we wanted.
Amanda, that's the one.
That's what we wanted. If the town, if we so desired, or we wanna make one of the special town employees.
Can you make a person a special, or do you have to make the committee a special?
Make a person.
You can?
No, no problem, glad you're here, but you're unnecessary.
Can we start over?
We started, we've been moving swiftly through nothing. We have not much on our agenda.
Yeah.
Yes, I asked you to be here.
Am I supposed to be here?
You are supposed to be here.
I just, I was tied up with a patient, I'm sorry.
No, no problem.
I didn't even grab my...
We were doing some rather mundane matters, we could have warned.
Okay.
We did some other things.
Randall's conflict of interest.
We have a joint meeting with the Parks Commission at 6:40, so we're waiting for them to come in.
They're late?
They're late.
What's the Parks Commission about?
Appointment of Paul Mac, election of Paul Mac to fill a spot.
You know, I used to get the agenda like a couple days earlier.
What's your, I asked if you can send me, send me your email, because I am still sending it out to your Yahoo email, I'm not gonna publicly...
It doesn't, for some reason, I'm not getting it. But I'll give it to you, just recheck.
Okay.
Because I sent something, too, and it came back to me.
Huh?
I sent something to you, too, and it came back to me.
Okay.
Did you, Liz, did you get my email?
This morning?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I have a new Gmail account, I don't know if it works, but...
I don't have that.
Yeah, I can give that to you. I just, it's always nice to have the agenda prior, so that if there's an issue, I can go talk to somebody.
Absolutely.
So, okay.
They've actually been coming out about a week ahead now.
Yeah.
Really?
You may be seeing it a week.
Okay.
You may get it tomorrow or the next day, as opposed to Monday next week.
And I didn't know the email changed, your email changed.
It hasn't changed, yeah, I've got two.
Oh, okay.
So after you have, yeah, if you have a personal email account, after about eight years, everybody sends stuff to when it gets like...
Okay.
And I can't figure out what's good and bad, so I just decided to get a new email account. It's functional.
So the question right now is whether we make Randall a special town.
And this is because of the Conservation Commission duties?
Possible, potential conflict of interest. So he filed this disclosure of not possible conflict of interest.
So he would be in possible conflict of interest if he was involved in a town project that came before the Conservation Commission, and he was involved in it because his role is highway super?
It may be a number of different ways. It may be that way, it may be because his wife has an interest in a project going on as a subdivision representing property owners.
Now, Ed took the time and effort to call, I'm sorry, I haven't brushed my teeth either, I apologize, I've been living on coffee. So I saw you back up, sorry.
No, I should try to give you a...
I know I have a drag of breath right about now, but I know that Mr. Colley took the time and effort to call and talk to Ethics. I think it's the D-10, whatever it is.
That's for him.
Is that any...
This is different.
This is different, and what legal way to...
I don't wanna render that kind of opinion, but...
Your select board way.
This, my understanding is this affords the employees some protection from possible conflicts of interest, by putting us on notice of a potential. This is more a notice issue, I think, than any other...
Looks like a very formal form, though.
Well, he, I, this is him, I think this is just the way they chose to outline it.
Hey.
Hello.
It's the park.
I think this is just the way they chose, David, I don't think this is a form that's required, I hope this is just the way Randall decided to outline it for us.
Oh, okay.
This is not any required form.
So can I ask Mark Reed this question? Because I think Mark is involved in something like this as well, right? With his role with heritage survey?
Well, yeah, but is he Park Commission Special Town Employees en masse?
I don't know.
We had that list last week, and I don't...
I didn't get a copy of that list that Amanda had.
Mark, are you on any other boards? I forget.
No.
Have you been on other boards in the past?
I haven't passed, yes, I've been on the Conservation Commission. Actually, I'm on the Master Plan Committee. Maybe you're now. I was on the Master Plan Committee. So currently, I'm on the Master Plan and Park Commission.
When you were on the Conservation Commission, did you get a special town employee designation? Because sometimes you would be working in conflict or something like that?
Yes. I believe there was quite a few boards and committees that were granted special town employees.
And where the whole board is granted that status.
Correct, it's the board.
By the fact you're on the board, you're granted that status. And then we have other...
Individual, supposed to the board.
Yeah, but we have other people who are individually granted that status.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So could you, could you, so Mr. Kemp wears a hat, and just go by the hat. So as wearing a hat, he's, he's a highway super. Is he a water commissioner as well? No, that's elected.
That's elected.
Would it, would it make sense to make the highway superintendent a special town employee? And then whoever wears that hat gets involved with that?
I think that's getting more complicated than we need to, I think we just need to appoint the person for now. Hopefully, he wears the hat for a long time, and we don't have to go through that regimen. Kinda like Ed wearing the hat. It's kinda worn out at this point in time.
I keep it simple.
That's what I suggested, it's just, if you so desire to make Mr. Kemp a special town employee, then make it for the individual.
Is there, in your opinion, I shouldn't say that, in your point of view, is there anything that I'm not thinking of that would be sort of crazy?
No, I mean, we run into this all the time with a small town and a limited number of pool of volunteers. I mean, we all serve a number of different roles.
But can you imagine a scenario that's like, oh my god?
No.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Kemp.
Special.
Special.
Doctor.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
We have the Park Commission here.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
Dr. Kemp. So we are here tonight to request a vacancy to fill. Mike Goyette has resigned from the Commission in November, back in November, and we've been without our fifth member since then, and most of the summer because of Mike's schedule. And we have had difficulties getting a quorum at times because of some other issues with other members of the Commission with health issues. So Paul Mac has been coming to our meetings since early last summer, and would like to join the Park Commission. And the other members of the Commission concur with that. I asked Reggie what the procedure was, she said the need to be posted, the position was posted, and timeframe has elapsed. And we're here before the select board to request that Paul Mac be appointed to the Park Commission to fulfill Mike Goyette's terms.
But Mike had a conflict with his schedule, it was nothing else?
Correct.
It wasn't ethics violation, and he was being chased around now, or anything like that?
No.
I'm kidding, Mike.
Yeah. Between Mike's family and work schedule, he could not make a...
And I've seen Paul's signs around, so...
He's still in my house.
So, Michael, do we have to have a special Parks Commission member at this point? Because Paul is a real estate...
I don't think, I don't think we're buying any more park land, so I think the potential for Paul of being in conflict...
I'm just asking, just saying.
I don't see that as an issue, that would be something she should resolve amongst herself, for herself, but I don't really think we're buying any more park land.
Then it's my pleasure to nominate your Park Commission.
All right, let me just make sure, you have a meeting posted tonight, right?
Yes, we do.
So we have a joint meeting at this point in time. So technically, we're entitled to interview Paula, but at this point, I mean, I have no questions for Paula since...
Do we do a background check?
We're gonna give my fingerprints.
Paula's been in town longer than anybody.
Does she know how to operate a swing?
But I just, I give it, the option to the board if they so wish to interview or ask questions of Ms. Mac.
How do you feel about dog parks?
What did he ask?
How do you feel about dog parks? I knew it was coming, I knew it was coming.
I thought he said god parks.
No, dogs.
How about you love dog parks?
Yeah, do you mind hearing about dog parks?
I don't know very much about dog parks. I think people who have dogs want to be...
Do we need one?
I tried.
You tried to.
I tried, but I was accused of trying to have my dog socialize with other dogs. Trouble is, I don't have a dog. I have cats, indoor cats, which was funny in and of itself, so I gave it one. Now, I would nominate Paul for the position.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Do they have to vote as many?
You guys need to vote at the same time.
So entertain a motion from the Park Commission to elect Paul Mac. Seven, seven, all in favor?
Aye.
Captured.
Thank you, everyone.
We have another volunteer.
You got one.
Now you can let her go out of the chair. Take the shackles off.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Paula, for volunteering.
Congratulations.
Try safely.
And clearly, this is an appointment to fill with Mike Goyette's terms, so you have to run again should you so choose in April, May, March. March, I just made that announcement, the caucus is March 27th.
It is.
Oh, do I do that right now?
Well, so...
I think it's late this year.
It seems like all of a sudden it's here again.
Yeah, it seems like, I thought the caucus is usually in February, but...
No, it's March. It's right at the same week.
We have a bit of dead air to fill. How about minutes? I have minutes from May 6th, July 15th, December 3rd, December 10th, and January 21st. And that should pretty much catch us, no?
I have a couple more.
Couple more?
Nothing. I mean, oh, you were...
It's snowstorm, you don't have to do it all.
No.
Homare Reddo Road is already shaking from all the people doing the snow dance.
I don't think it's necessary to do a snow dance today. I think it's just gonna happen.
Probably also occurring on genie circle as we speak.
Are we expecting Mr. Collins?
He's upstairs.
He's upstairs, and at some point in time, we will have to have him down. So you've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 sets of minutes. One of them includes Ed and Roy. Must have been the last meeting she was at. You know what, you can't approve July 15th, because there were only three of you here, and we need Ed Colley here to approve that. So really, you have four, four that you need to look at. So we'll have to carry July 15th forward. Take a motion from anybody, or are you still reading?
I'm still reading.
There's a couple of them that I wasn't here, so I apologize. Can I make a motion to approve the ones that weren't here?
I just let that close, which ones were you... So you were here, you were not here for May 6th. You were not here for December 3rd. You were here for December 10th.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve all minutes pending discussion.
Actually, now you can throw the July 15th back into the mix. We got five sets of minutes we're trying to approve, but some of us were here at various times. We got a motion and a second to approve the minutes.
You know, I'm abstaining for the ones that weren't here, so...
You wanna take a minute to look at them? Or do you need to take one?
No, please, please.
Yeah.
I need some glasses.
Need glasses, I'll lend you mine. And I guess at this point in time, that's, this is the executive session, and that's the end, I've gotten everything, right? So I guess I'll make the announcement now that we're gonna go into executive session at 7 o'clock, and we will not become, we will close the meeting in executive session and not come out for public afterwards, because the next, all the other agenda items have been taken care of. And I will caution everybody that next week's agenda looks to be rather lengthy. And we need everybody here if we can.
Opened time for the public?
We've done that already, but you can do it again if you want.
George is still here, so, and he's thinking.
I think you already have my say.
I just, hey, who invested?
We're gonna give George the prize for having the best attendance.
He's missed a couple nights.
He certainly beat anybody else in the room.
You wanna compare those?
So there's a motion and a second, I do abstain for the ones that I am not, who are present.
Ed's looking at them. Well, we got five minutes, we must get these...
Well, before you make the decision not to do, well, executive session, we have that disclosure to do.
For Randall?
For Randall, and for me.
Oh, all right, well, we can do yours, we did Randall.
Okay, this one.
July 15th is okay. So that requires, actually, this requires David, Ed, and Jackie.
Wow.
July 15th, you three were the ones here, so this is your, Liz and I weren't here, so it's your motion, I take it to approve July 15th.
Well, I was gonna approve to, not to approve, but to, I don't know what you had to say.
Why don't you stay, why don't you, July 15th, you're gonna approve it?
Yes, sir.
Move to approve.
Move to approve.
Move to approve, second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, from the three of you, a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
So that one's done.
July 15th.
What year is this one? We got Roy in here. Makes it.
That noise. Yeah, Roy, that's gonna be in.
So Ed Roy's not here, so...
It was her last meeting.
May 6th.
It was her last meeting? Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
May 6th, 2013?
Yeah.
We're trying to catch up on our minutes.
From May?
From May.
Okay. May couldn't, okay. So what's next, which one's next, Michael? I'm just trying to speed read here as fast as I can.
Ed's looking at them. So right now, I think he's still reading May 6th, but...
That's a long time.
No problem. So we have a meeting in May 6th where David McDougall, Jackie Sears, Ed Colley, and I were present. Someone wanna make a motion?
Some.
Second, someone?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
That's May 6th approved.
Which one are you looking at next?
Whatever was next in succession.
Next one I'm looking at is December 3rd. December 3rd?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from December 3rd.
Go ahead.
What'd you say?
He's actually still reading.
Oh, okay.
We're trying to catch up on our minutes.
From May?
From May.
Okay. May couldn't. So what's next? Which one's next, Michael?
I'm just trying to speed read here as fast as I can.
Ed's looking at them. So right now, I think he's still reading May 6th, but. No problem. So we have a meeting at May 6th where David McDougall, Jackie Sears, Ed Colley, and I were present. Someone wanna make a motion?
Some move.
Second, someone?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
That's May 6th approved.
Which one are you looking at next?
Whatever was next in succession.
Next one I'm looking at is December 3rd.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from December 3rd.
Go ahead.
What'd you say?
He's actually still reading.
Do you ever include comments in a public minutes? Supposed to be only board action.
Most probably. Actually, sometimes, we probably put in more than we have to.
It's like it's verbatim. Sometimes it's just a total, just sort of the overview of what happened. So how much snow are we getting?
I don't know, I don't think about it.
12 inches.
None, if their accuracy is anything to be judged, since yesterday, which was supposed to be a dusting, turned out to be two inches or whatever it was.
Now, is your office across from the Commonwealth Academy?
No, that's right across from the Springfield Cemetery.
Yeah, on top of the hill, it's all.
Oh, that's, yeah, no, I'm at the bottom of the hill.
Yeah, I had two basketball games this weekend up there.
Oh, I forget they've changed the McDuffie School to the Commonwealth. So can I, on December 3rd, I was present, Jackie was present, Liz Moulton, and Ed Colley, David was not present. Anybody wanna make a motion?
I make a motion to accept the minutes from December 3rd, is it?
Yep. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, my house, my office is right at the bottom. I sit on the corner of the street.
I saw that. Boy, you guys got devastated up there. There's not a tree with a branch on it.
No. Let me tell you, my parking lot, where I used to be able to park in my back parking lot any time in the summer and get in the shade, I now go out to a car that's about 1,000 degrees.
Which one's next, Michael? July 15th? We did that one.
I'm trying, I think I did them in order.
This is the 10th.
My building was surrounded by all huge trees at one time, which was the reason I was trapped in my office for six hours, is because I couldn't get out because all the trees were down.
You had power?
Yeah, we had, we never lost power. Other instant, couple of minutes, not, not, because we're all underground utilities there.
You're talking about the tornado?
Yeah.
Did you see it?
I was right there.
Really?
I opened the back door and it was coming up the street.
Oh, my God.
Almost slapped the door off, out of my hands.
I sat in Channel 22 across the Connecticut River.
Yeah.
It was amazing.
Came up Central Street right at us.
Mostly came hit, hit on Main Street, Italians actually, come right up.
Came right up.
But the stuff in between was fine, it was just the bigger buildings?
No, what happened, it seemed to skip, like the Philadelphia apartments on the other side of the street from me, which some people would say would be a blessing if they were gone, basically lost a chimney. Nothing else happened until.
And then it, we were lucky, we lost our trees and an air conditioner and our roof, but
then it really kind of lifted up over us and slammed into McDuffie on the other side of the hill.
What time of day was that?
5:00. They were threatening thunder showers all day long, and I thought, I'm not running to my car in the rain, so I was gonna leave before the thunder showers got there, and I opened the door and there it was.
Wow.
I'm not, the last minute, I wasn't.
Was it very loud?
I don't remember it being loud, but what happened is, my partner was up on the second floor, talking on the phone when I left, and she, her windows faced the way the tornado was coming. And I knew she was on the phone, she would never even pay attention to what was coming at her. So I went in and I screamed for her to come downstairs, and of course, she paid no attention to me at all. So I had to go up and get her. And by the time we got down, halfway down the stairs, her windows had all blown in, and then by the time we got down on the first floor, the other windows on that corner all blew in. So this is December 10th, I was there, Jackie was there, Ed was there, Elizabeth Moulton was there. Somebody make a motion?
Make a motion to approve minutes from December 10th.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did he say where he was going?
Bathroom, I think he said. I think, I don't know.
So how long did it take for the police to come?
Not five, 10 minutes. The police officers, they flooded the neighborhood with fire and police, and they went door to door, which was very, very, very good, because next door to us is a woman who's well into her 90s, and she was terrified, but, you know, nothing happened to us, it wasn't even revealed on us. I have minutes of January 21st. I was here, Ed was here, Elizabeth Moulton. And a motion?
Make a motion to approve minutes from January 21st.
Ed?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Standing.
All right, so now we need to talk about.
Liz, I have to give you a disclosure. If the Board wants, they sign it. If not.
Do I have to sign for, did I have to sign for Randall?
No, this one here you have to sign for, because Randall just has to put the disclosure. I have to have it approved by the Board.
Okay. Then why don't we, the other thing is, I wanted to talk to you about is emergency management. When you resigned Highway, did you resign that, or was your intention to stay on in that?
My intentions are to stay on until, April, May, whenever the appointment period comes up.
So you're still emergency management until April or May?
Yeah.
So then we'll take that off the agenda for next time and put it on, we should probably put it on sometime in between time.
I talked to MEMA and FEMA, and they have talked to John Woodman about doing it.
Someone else has.
I haven't had a chance to talk to John about it yet.
Someone else came to me and asked about it, which is what made me think of it.
Well, it's.
So I would think it would have to be an open posting.
No, no.
No?
I don't think it's an appointment of the Board. Usually, there is an, but you wanna put an open posting, be my guest.
Well, I was just assuming it was an.
Yeah, but, you know, it's.
Well, maybe the first thing we gotta find out is if it's an open posting.
It's an appointment. It's not a hiring, you know? I believe you can post it if you want to, but you can also appoint. My feeling is, I would like to see somebody who has thorough, some working knowledge of FEMA and MEMA, and knows what's required, and able to be here to coordinate activities.
All right, well, we should probably put it on sometime. When do you anticipate?
Oh, when's your, you do a blanket appointment sometime in April, I believe.
Is that one?
First meeting in May.
With the, with the election, isn't it? When the reorganization, and then we point everybody back.
Yeah.
So.
So if you post it and you get more than one person, then do interview them? Is that what you do?
Well, currently, right now, you have, I'm the emergency management, and the police chief, and the super, and the fire chief are the deputies, and they're cross-trained, in case I wasn't able to do it.
So, and this factor matters.
They have to have, they also have to go, and eventually, I would say a reasonable amount of time, they'll have to go out and get their certifications, their CSI of 100, 200, 300, and be able to respond in those capacities.
What's wrong with having the Highway Superintendent becoming the appointing commander? So I don't know this John person.
I, I did it because it was easier all the years.
And we gotta be careful, because that's not on the agenda. I only brought it up to find clarity's sake, and we should put it on an agenda and discuss it at some point in time. I only, and I apologize, but I don't wanna get into a discussion that we shouldn't be having with no agenda item. I only, someone came to me and said, was Ed continuing in that capacity? And it dawned on me that, I didn't know whether it was his intention when he resigned, or not resigned, retired from Highway, if it was his intention to retire from that also, so I wanted to ask. So we have a disclosure by a public employee, but we haven't, this is the same as Randall's, we haven't.
No, it's not.
No, but I'm saying that it's got a lot of data, a lot of data on it.
Yeah.
I don't, do you wanna act on this, or do you wanna circulate this so you have a review and do it next week?
I don't care.
I can't work there. So, I mean, I don't, if there's a specific form, this has never had a form before.
This form here, specific form for a Board of Selectment member that has a town under 10,000, to exercise the exemptions, that I can do other stuff other than Board of Selectment.
What action, what action do we need to take? Just sign it.
Sign it. Well, here, why don't I review it? This is a disclosure by special municipal employee of financial interest in a municipal contract as required under Mass General Law 268A20-sub-D. It's Edward Colley. I am a selectman in a town with a population of 10,000 or fewer people. Title or position, advisor to the Highway Superintendent. If you are a special municipal employee because of municipal agency has contracted with your, and Ed has checked not applicable. Highway Department, 8 former road, this is just general, checked one, he's an elected official. Statement, he's, he has checked the box number two. I will have a new financial interest in a contract made by a municipal agency. My financial interest in a contract made by the municipal, municipal agency is a compensated non-elected position with a municipal agency. The contracting authority will be the Board of Selectmen. In my work as a special municipal employee for my municipal agency, I participate and have office response, official responsibility for activities of the contracting agency. My agreement is with the Board of Selectmen to advise the Highway Superintendent of current projects and plans for 2014-15. If the contract is between a municipal agency and another person or entity, please identify the person not applicable. Please explain the financial $44 an hour not to exceed $7,000. I assume that's what you were expecting?
That was my rate of pay.
That, well, that was your current.
Basically, I think it was 43, 75, or something like that, way around the 44.
Date you acquired the financial interest, February 20th, 2014, so I.
That's one month after I retired.
So that's your anticipated start date? Name of approving body, Board of Select and advisor to Highway Superintendent, same information over here.
Is there a length of time that that's valid for?
They, they wanted to, not to, give me a dollar amount not to exceed, and I put, I think, $7,000, which is $150. Their amount.
Can you re-certify that?
Yes.
And just for clarity's sake, here's the list of Boards and Commissions that are already special town employees.
Can you put that in our thing? Like on the side?
Have a copy of it.
You know what I mean?
Well, I make a motion to go ahead and sign this one.
And I'm only bringing it up, we talked about hiring Ed, but we never discussed dollars amounts or anything else, so if you wanna, if you're signing this, you're accepting his financial plan.
I mean, was it on the agenda to talk about all this stuff, or not?
This was, wasn't it?
It was on that?
Yeah, we can take.
Was it part of that, the salary range and all of that, or was that something we just all of a sudden expected? Because there's a restraint of time, which was actually the $7,000.
Well, I don't know whether restraint is to $7,000.
Yeah, yeah, so when I talked to the Ethics Board, they wanted a dollar amount not to exceed on there.
Oh, that's what, but that's, we never came up with it.
No, Ethics Board did.
So you're giving yourself a quarter raise or?
What's that?
25 cent raise.
There about something. I just rounded up to $44.
So if you're working, are you working more than 20 hours a week? You're gonna get health care benefits?
I get health insurance no matter what. I'm retired.
He gets retired. He gets retired.
You get paid holidays?
How, how long do you think, do you think you'll need?
That's for about 150 hours.
Do you think you'll, do you think you'll need 150 hours?
You should grasp it. You should get, you're able to get that, 150.
So that's 20 hours a week for eight weeks.
Well, I wasn't gonna do 20 hours a week. I was gonna do it on a need basis.
Oh, all right. Well, I'm just, I just worked that.
I was just doing it as he needs me, because I told him, I don't wanna inundate him with, with construction season activity in the middle of winter, because he's absorbing the job now, he needs to concentrate on the winter and make sure he's doing a good job there. The next step come spring would be to clean up and start dealing with your construction projects, your maintenance projects.
So that would be spread out? It's not like we're gonna get a $7,000 hit all along time?
You know, I don't plan on doing 20 hour a week, maybe in the summer where there's a lot of activity, it might be one or two weeks like that, but for the most part, I put a cushion there of 150 hours.
Where are we taking this money for and from?
It would come out of the Highway Department budget.
We have, because there are a lot of money left in the salary lines.
Yes.
Okay.
For this year, what about next year?
He should be pretty versed by next year.
Yeah, but you gotta.
You're helping him with the budget, I would assume.
What's that?
You're helping Randall with the budget?
Yes, they presented it tonight. He presented it tonight.
Because, I mean, you're gonna run into an annual town meeting budget season. What's your pleasure?
Well, I would still go ahead and sign at this point. Randall's gonna need that one.
The motion is to, to accept Ed as a special town employee, municipal employee with the kind, with a salary of $44 an hour to a maximum of $7,000. That everybody understands?
Mm-hmm.
Any problems? Any questions? Is it, I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nothing on this tonight?
Hmm?
Is there an agenda on this tonight?
There was an agenda, yeah. So who gets this now?
Eileen.
Oh, Eileen, okay.
I need to make a copy for the minutes.